All right, we'll get going here. It's five past. We're still expecting quite a few people to jump in, but that's okay. So I'm Todd Reed. I'm the Executive Director for the Alberta Association of Landscape Architects. On the call today, we also have Tara from the BCSLA, and I believe Ingrid from OALA will be on as well. So just a quick orientation to the software here. You'll notice the chat's been disabled, so we're gonna try to get you to put your Q and A into the Q and A box. There's a Q and A button down the bottom. You'll be able to see those questions as they come up. You can up both them. You can comment on them. And then I will make sure that I feed those to Leah and Chen as we go, so I'll be moderating. If you're having technical difficulties of any sort, don't put those in the Q and A box. I'm just gonna make an adjustment. You will be able to chat to the four of us, and I will sort your technical difficulties out. In some cases, you may need to log out and log back in, but that's fine. Just a reminder, this session is being recorded and will be available after the event for those that maybe couldn't join us this morning. And on behalf of BCL Alberta and Ontario, I really want to thank Leah and Chen for taking lead on this. It's so awesome to have people that are in this process, leading the process. But Tara Ingrid and I are here. If there are process or program-related questions, we will try to help and answer those to make sure that we get accurate information. The last thing I do want to sort of draw all of your attention to, I know you've gotten a number of emails about this, but it's an important program, and I want to make sure everyone has a chance to sort of be aware of it. If there are questions about this pilot, we will save them for the end, and we'll deal with those after the main presentation. But if you are writing in the August or thinking about it at the last minute, jumping into the August administration of the LAAREs, you do have the opportunity to participate in the pilot program, allowing you to write from home instead of going into a test center. We're hoping to get about 50 people involved in this pilot, and I think we're at about 25 or 30 right now. So if you are scheduled for an in-person test center, please consider jumping into the pilots. I do believe that the closure for the administration is technically was Friday, but they're holding it open for Canadians until Monday, in case you change your minds. If you did want to change from an in-person test center to an online test center, I think you can do that after the administration closes. You just need to call and support work with the CLARB staff to make that change. So if there are questions about that program, because it's a little bit different, hit me at the end. Keep in mind, it is only available to Sections 1 and 2 of the Larry, and that's because Sections 3 and 4 with the drag-and-drops and some of them more complex features, we're still testing to ensure the system can accommodate that successfully from a home-based program. With that, I'm gonna turn things over to Chen and Leah. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, so they can share their screen. I'm on computer. There we go. Thanks so much.
Leah, are you gonna share yours?
Yes, I'm just, I'm just getting a, let me see if I can just do. For whatever reason, I am apparently not authorized to.
Give it a second. It sometimes needed me, it needs me to be out. Your computer might take a second. Try again.
Let me see. Oh, there, I think it works now.
Yep, you're perfect.
Perfect, okay. All right, well, I just want to quickly thank everyone for joining us today just for this quick layer overview. I know times have been a little bit challenging, and I know that we may have quite a few more people registered for this section, so hopefully this can offer you a little bit of advice prior to starting your layer process. So this presentation that we have today is going to be very similar to the one that we did this time last year. We got a lot of really positive feedback on that presentation, and a lot of people came to us and said that it was really useful. So this will serve as kind of a high-level overview of the entire process of signing up for the exams and then running through all the way to just a brief overview of exam 1 through 4, and then some tips and tricks that just Chen and I have put together. So my name is Leah. I am your Senior Associate Representative on OALA Council. I've been on council for one year, and I have about one more year to go before my term is up. I am currently a landscape architect at IBI Group's head office in Toronto, Ontario, and I'm a University of, well, BLA grad, and I have currently written three out of four of my exams to date. I was supposed to write my fourth in April, but obviously that was put over, so that exam is still pending. Chen?
Hi, everyone. I'm Chen, the Junior Associate Representative in OALA. New to the council. Currently working in Studio TLA in Toronto as a master designer. And I've done my first exam, and I'm doing my second now. So I think we can continue.
Great. So this is just our brief agenda for today. So again, we're just gonna run through how to register. I know Todd already kind of mentioned the remote layer pilot. Todd, I wasn't sure if you were going to be mentioning that, so I just have one brief slide on it with a link to the presentation. And then, again, just an overview of each exam section, and then the overall structure and some tips and additional resources. We're gonna go through this kind of more on the quick side. I know people tend to have a lot of questions, so we just want to make sure to leave enough time to answer whatever questions that you guys might need, as this will be recorded and available later. So first, signing up for the exam. So the number one step is you're going to first direct your attention to the CLARB website. So you're going to create a CLARB account, and then the next step will be to review the Layer Orientation Guide. So throughout this entire presentation, all of this information is available on the Layer Orientation Guide found on the CLARB website. All of this information we have picked up from there. So we just have a few screen grabs from the process to just illustrate to you. So you'll be able to see the, we'll be able to see the sign-in and create new user here. So whether you already have an account and are signing up for a second exam or just starting your process, you will need to create a new user account here. And then, so once you click that and you create an account, you will be able to go to "Take the Exam" and then "Register." So in the "Take the Exam" section, you will see this "Register for the Exam" checklist. So this will run you through the entire process. So first, you'll want to check your eligibility requirements, obviously, to see if you're eligible to take the exam. And then, the next step that you're gonna need to do is start a council record. So in order for CLARB to keep track of what exams you've written and passed and be able to sign you up as the governing body, you will need to create a council with them, a council record, sorry. So that's here, so that's step number two. So signing up for the exam. So once you do all of those steps and you have created your council record with CLARB, you will be able to register for the exam. So the exam costs differ between Sections 1 and 2 and then Sections 3 and 4. So Sections 1 and 2 are $365, and Sections 3 and 4 are $570. Unfortunately for us Canadians, these are priced in US dollars. So that is here. So "Register for the Exam," step number three. And then from there, you go to "Start Registration." So then, unfortunately, we don't have any screenshots of that, but the process is quite simple. You will just select which exam you're gonna be doing, and then from there, you will get this section here. So once you've selected which exam you want to do and you've signed up for it, you will then get an email from CLARB, and they'll send you a confirmation with instructions on how to schedule your exam. So in that email, you'll have a link. So in there, you'll have to also sign up for Pearson View. So Pearson View is the actual testing center. So CLARB administers the exams, and then Pearson View is where you will actually go to write your exams. So from there, you'll access that link, and it'll take you to the Pearson View website, in which you will use your CLARB credentials to create an account on the Pearson View website. All that information will be in that confirmation email. And then you will select the date and location to write your exam and schedule the actual exam using your candidate ID, which will be provided by CLARB. So a screen grab of that is just here. So this is where that link will take you, and then you will go to "Sign In." And you will use the sign-in information that's provided to you by CLARB in which to do so. So once you sign in here, once you've signed up with CLARB, that exam that you've signed up for will show up in your pre-approved exams. So that exam, you will then be able to take and schedule a time and place for at a testing center. Once you've done that, it will come up in your upcoming appointments, in which you'll be able to see all of your appointment details, and you'll be able to reschedule or cancel if necessary through the upcoming appointments tab. So I know that Todd briefly covered this, but this is new this year. The Remote Layer Pilot. So we do have an information link here, which Todd also just reviewed. So obviously, due to COVID-19, the whole administration was canceled, and they're offering something new for Canadians of the BCSLA, the AALA, and the OALA. It's just a pilot program. If you want to be part of it for the August Layer Administration, you're able to between the dates of August 1st and 22nd. It's only available for Sections 1 and 2, like Todd mentioned. Sections 3 and 4 have a little bit more of a complicated answering system, so it makes a little bit of sense, you know, the first time that they're doing this, that they wouldn't be able to offer that for those exams. The one thing to note with this that I wanted to mention when I was listening to that talk was that there are no breaks permitted. So especially if it's, you know, your first time writing, just to be aware of that, that if you do step away from your computer at all, your exam will be fully shut down during the remote proctor pilot. So just something to note and be aware of, that if you do write in person, you are able to leave the room. The clock will keep going, but if you're doing this at home, then you will not have that option. All right, Chen?
Yeah. So before introducing each section, I'd like to share that you can find all this exam structure from Layer Orientation Guide from CLARB website, which is this one, if you can see my camera. So Section 1 is Project and Construction Management. It introduces the framework of the professional working process. As you can see from the screen, it's from pre-construction through construction process and till the maintenance, as well as you can learn from the study materials about office or project management. So I did this exam when I was in university, and I found it's a little bit complex for me. But when I got into the office working and when I had that kind of experience from working in the office, I felt like it's getting much easier. Yep, so when you read through all your study materials, you can have this chart, which you can find from the CLARB website on the site for, to matching each testing points. So you can trace it from the book or trace it back to the book you read. So during the exam, all questions would match each testing point from this chart. Although it's probably not that obvious, you can tell from each question, but if you really take the time to think, you can trace it back to every single point. So in my experience, there are lots of long written questions. So in Section 1, in each question, sometimes they gave you a long story background of each question. But you're gonna take your time to read carefully and figure out what exactly they're asking towards the testing point. So probably sometimes you can find some keywords or some sentences. Then you can, you can trace it back or think it back to the materials you studied and make your right choices. In the process of studying, I think you should make sure you entirely understand the role of each party, such as a client, general contractor, and subcontractors. And also understand all steps during the project process and terms, such as the process of RFP or process of tender and some terms, like what's the difference between attendance and change orders? And we grabbed some study material info from the CLARB website. And there are two books I highly recommend. Actually, the first one is introduce the framework of professional practice, which is not showing on the CLARB website, but it's, I think it's quite fit well for Canadians. I said one text. It's called "The Practice of Landscape Architecture in Canada," which is this book. So this book introduces the framework of the whole practice. Then, once you finish this book, you all have a understanding of how this practice working. And the second book is "The Construction Contracts," for hints. This book introduces the whole construction contracts process from all participants, like from the owner, from professionals like us, and also from contractors. So when you read through this book, don't dig too much, just stay with the chapters related to our role. That's how I feel. And you can get a better understanding and more details of the whole process, I think.
If I can just jump in here for a second. I found this first exam to be really heavy in terminology. So one of the key things when you're going through these books is really making sure that you understand what each of the words mean individually, especially if you don't have a lot of experience working yet. So obviously, everyone has a different background coming into these exams, and some people might have a lot of work experience working with construction contracts. Some might have more experience with design. So knowing what areas, when you're going through this, you don't know and you do know, I think, is also important. So I spent a lot of time in the index of the book and going through exactly what the definitions were of certain words and just, and making sure that when I was reading about that subject, that I actually knew what it was that I was reading about. Because this one, in particular, when you're writing the exam, I find that knowing which words they're referring to is essential. So just making sure you understand the terminology. For me, that was helpful.
Yeah, I think that's, I feel the same way. Because like, when I, when you read through all the chapters, I think it's better to relate it back to the chart we just shared. So based on the chapters, we should know which elements of the exams it's related to. I think that's really important, not just to read the whole chapters and understand the. Because I, I feel like the construction contracts, this book is, if you read really carefully, you'll get lots of stories of each roles, but actually, sometimes it's kind of wasting your study time.
Right, yeah, I agree that cross-referencing this list with the index of each of these books is really important. For this exam, I do remember definitely starting with the Construction Contracts book, because it does have the majority of the information, but then what you could not find in that book, I then took off that list and I cross-referenced into the other books. And then, areas where I would do a practice exam and find that I noticed a trend in certain areas that were lacking, I would then go back and read those areas in the other books again, just to double-check that I fully understood. Yep, Todd?
Faye asked the question, "How much time do you have for each section?"
We will be covering it at the end of.
But for the first one is three hours in total, and for exact, you'll have two and a half hours for the exam and half an hour for seating time, which is the seating time, including you read through the instruction of the how-to-use computer or how-to-use that program of the testing.
Yeah, we have that slide at the end of the presentation, so don't worry if you're wondering about the time or how many questions are for each one. We'll cover that all at the end for all of them.
Then, we have our Section 2, which is Inventory and Analysis. And I believe we all learned this during school, but I feel like this exam is still a bit of different than what we learned, because it's really based on the theory, based on the terms. So if we pass to the second slide, next slide, yeah. So if we, for us to better prepare the Section 2, we need to understand what's the difference between inventory and analysis. Because sometimes we, easy to mix up inventory and analysis altogether. And for this exam, it's really important for us to to know what's the process and what's the terms for inventory and what's for the analysis. So for the inventory, we need to understand all necessary data we need to collect when we work on a site. Because like, in this chapter, in this exam, we also have some pre-test questions, and they are really easy to mix up with the Section 2. Lots of pre-test questions, they came from the third sections, which is related to site design. And the sign design is so closely related to inventory and analysis. So that's why we really need to understand the terms in inventory and the terms in analysis. In my experience, when I started this, and actually, I did once before and I failed. In my experience, the question in this section is more general and broader questions than what we met in Section 1. It's not just focusing on each, the meaning of each term. Sometimes, all the questions in this section is really related to the, all the study materials you have now. And it actually requires you think and associate all the, all your knowledge base altogether. Like, for example, when you meet a question that asks you for analysis of condition of a site, you probably have to think all elements, such as physical, biological, and cultural altogether, and find out the best solution or best answer of this question. And when you read through the questions, because in this sections, the exam will provide several maps, different kinds of maps, showing counters, showing site infos. Then you need to have a, you have to be familiar with all kinds of maps and know how to read through them and remember some, I think some base, base knowledge, such as soil infos and geologic info. I feel they are pretty important in this exam.
Yeah, this one, I also, out of the three that I passed, this is the only one that I failed. And I think because going from Exam 1 to Exam 2, this one was more theory-based, and I think that that's where the process of writing these exams is different for everyone, because for my personal experience, coming from the BLA program, I think that I would have done better on this straight out of school. Whereas with Exam 1, I personally would have done better with more experience than when I wrote it. So again, when you're going through this, it's important to just think about what experience you have and what areas you might feel like you need to focus on more.
And we have some materials also from, it's recommended from CLARB. And my, in my experience, my first book to study is the Site Analysis. It introduces the all necessary terms and process of inventory and analysis. Then we can have a understanding of what's this exam includes for the testers, I think. And to prepare this one, I also did lots of practice questions, the practice exams. And there's a, I think you can find the resources from OALA layer groups. There's a, what's up? It's a cheat sheet, something similar with, so there's a summarize of each testing points, I think. Leah, do you remember what's that called?
Um, I wouldn't reference anything that has been put together by individuals personally, because that would.
That's a published. It's in, yeah, 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 it's in that resource folder, but I couldn't remember exactly the name of that.
Okay, I'm not sure what.
Well, that is quite helpful. It's, it actually summarizes the book. And once you finish the book, you can have a better understanding, more detailed branches from the book, I think.
Yeah, for this one, I actually ended up reading all of the books, mostly because I didn't find any of them overly daunting. Like, for the first exam, a lot of the, like, that first main book is quite dense, but these ones are a lot more graphic, so they're also kind of a little bit more enjoyable to read and go through. So that's just my two cents. So I, for this exam in particular, I found the more that I looked at the information, because a lot of the questions are heavily graphic-oriented on the exam, found that a lot more useful to see more. But that's just, that was my experience.
Yeah, I think for this exam, I think is really important is you need to associate what you've read and what you learned from the materials and to find out the answer, not just the terms or keywords, I think.
All right, so for Exam 3, so this is the exam that I wrote last year, so last April, April 2019. And so this exam is broken down into stakeholder process, master planning, and site design. So as you can see, it's very heavily weighted in the master planning and site design area. So we have this breakdown here, which, again, in the Layer Orientation Guide, taken straight from there. So this exam, I found one key important thing to remember, having had a few years of experience under my belt at this point, was that they can't make reference to, in this exam, anything that's directly correlated to any kind of like, design guidelines or regulations based from a jurisdiction. So they can't make any references to, like, say, if I'm practicing in the city of Toronto, they cannot make reference to anything that I would in my professional career be using every day. They can't reference anything like that. So it's all based around the theoretical best practices. So the challenge with this exam and going through this information is that the questions and their answers will be based off of the information that's provided as best practices. So in a sense, you kind of have to turn off your own internal bias and just think about what the best theoretical answer would be if you didn't have any of that personal and professional bias from your everyday working life. So these books that we have here, everyone that I've spoken to and myself have all waited kind of differently on which books they found more useful. Again, coming from different backgrounds and having different kinds of experience. Some people in their professional life have had, you know, no design experience, whereas some people have a lot of design experience that they do in their work. Some people are more focused on detail and contracts, and some people aren't. So this one in particular, this exam, I found tricky only in the sense that when I left, I had no idea if I had passed or not. Thankfully, I did. But in terms of the information, I would almost suggest cross-referencing the subjects first and seeing what areas you feel like your gaps in knowledge are right off the get-go and maybe focusing on those areas that you feel like you haven't had a lot of experience working in, because this exam is primarily application-based. It's, well, the exam that I ended up having was very little theory-based, and I'd say like 95% all just. very little theory-based and I'd say like 95% all just application-based. So when I say application-based, I mean, they would give you an example and they would say, so you have a client who has this property and this is what they're looking to attain and this is what their goals are. And you need to figure out what the best case solution would be. So it's, it's complicated in that you have to kind of set aside what you would think the best case scenario would be and focus back in on the question. Who's the client? What's the situation? You have to use your, your your knowledge from the inventory and analysis exam as well to pull into this. And from using all of that information, then you'd have to look at the site itself and then what your options are for answering the question and come up with the best situation using all of that information. So it has nothing to do with, you know, what you would practice in, in your career. Um, I found in this one that there was a lot of questions going back and forth between sections and plans and plans and sections. So there's a lot of topographical questions where they'll take a section cut through and you'll have to identify the correct one. There's a lot of questions on circulation. Accessibility is a big one. Accessibility is very important, but again, it can't be anything referencing anything to do with like AODA. So it's all best practices. There was a lot of questions on opportunities and restraints of certain sites. And again, just a general overarching theme is master planning. So there's a lot of with a general site and you will have certain elements in the side panel that you'll have to find the best place to, to put. So that's just my two cents on this exam. Feeling like you're unsure, but the key is to just utilize those best practices and, and the information that you read in the books based off of that. So section four, grading drainage and construction documentation. Unfortunately, neither Chen or I have written. I was supposed to have written this in April, but unfortunately I don't have any kind of personal knowledge to pass down to any of you as of yet. So just a, a general overview of this exam, so 20% site preparation plans, 40% general plans and details, 25% specialty plans and 15% specifications. So in beginning to study for this exam, obviously I know myself and I know what areas I have no exposure to. So in doing some practice exams, I found that it, it was more heavily weighted to specifications than this breakdown might lead you to believe. So I was a little bit hesitant of those practice exams. So unfortunately, I don't have any actual exam experience to pass down, but this exam is very technical weighted. So when I, when I got the feeling studying, it was that there's just a lot of information to cover and to go through that's very technical-based. So I would leave the most amount of time studying for any exams for this one, just because there's so much to cover and there's so much to know. And well, for myself, I don't have a lot of exposure to this personally. So I was asking a lot of questions to, to colleagues and, you know, maybe why I might be getting a certain practice exam question wrong and stuff like that. So it just, it took a lot more time to get through the information. So these are the books for this exam. And one of the biggest things you'll notice is that the reading list for section four is quite similar to the reading list for section three. So for this, and a lot of these books, not the entire book is relevant to this exam, but there are certain chapters within these books that are directly relevant. So cross-referencing the index of the book to the topics on this list are very key, especially for sections three and four, because you'll just waste a lot of time going through the entire book. A lot of people found the TimeSaver standard book not directly relevant, but personally, I found it very useful in terms of answering some really complicated technical questions that I had. It is very heavy information. So would I necessarily recommend reading it front through back? Probably not, but if you need to reference it for something specific that you can't figure out how to make work, then that's probably the best book to reference for anything specifically technical-related. So how are the exams structured? So as we got that question, we were going through section one. Section one is three hours seat time and two and a half hours writing time. Section two is two and a half hours and two hours writing time. Section three is four hours seat time and three and a half hours writing time. And section four is the longest with four and a half hours seat time, four hours writing time. So what that means is that at the beginning of each exam, you'll have a half hour period, in which case you will get situated at your workstation. You will have a couple of questions to help run through, make sure you understand how the exam is going to be working on the computer, you'll get familiar with. How to go back, how to review your questions, how to flag questions, just the whole period. So that's what that half hour period is time, time works. So the actual writing time is when you go through that first half hour period and then you say, yes, I'm ready to write the exam, that's when that second time will start. So that's your actual writing time. So if you take any breaks during that time, say you need to get a cup of water or you need to use the washroom or something like that, your time will keep running. So each section also has different numbers of questions, which you can see listed here, and they also have a number of pre-test items. So pre-test items are also explained in detail in the LER orientation guide, but just a, a little touch on that is that they're questions that are mixed into your actual exam questions. They're unidentified, so you don't know that they're pre-test items. And they will not be used as part of your score, but they are items that are kind of being tested through CLAR to see if they're good questions or fair questions to use it for exams in the future. So for section three and four, you'll notice that there are more than just multiple choice and multiple response questions. There are also drag and drop and hotspot questions. So these questions, again, refer to the LER orientation guide for actual screenshots of what, some examples of these mean. But so because they're very graphic in nature, there's sort of more dimension to the question. So you will actually need to move certain items across your screen to certain areas in which hotspots will be used for a lot of those. So that, what that means is that if you click and drag something, obviously you don't need to get it directly on the exact point, but there's a, a certain limit in which case you will need to get it within. So all of that is explained. And there's also a link here to the, our YouTube video walkthrough as well.
So we're gonna have, we can share some tips and some additional resources. I feel like if somebody here asked me, what's the best way to study or what's my experience of study, I'd say it's, it's really depends on different people, because like everyone has different ways of studying of that. Well, for here, we still accumulate some experience from different several people. And I think there are some experiences are most of people can use and most of people already used and feel they are really helpful. The first one is the practice exams. I believe if you have experience of that, I'd say it's really helpful you, uh, help you before you get into the real exam. Because they are the, I'd say probably 90% of the format and exams type are really similar to what you're gonna meet in the real exam. And it's also, this practice exam is really, is also doing that in your computer. So you can feel the environment of sitting in the exam room or facing your computer during the real exam. I believe for the prepared exam, you, once you get signed in and you'll have a month of, get access with unlimited time to use that. So if you're doing that and you can check your answer and then you can get it back to review those and be doing the whole exams.
I think it's three months.
Three months?
I think it's three months, yeah.
Okay, okay. I mean, like as usual, I signed in a month before I get into the real exam. And I think it's a kind of helpful. And the second one is flash cars. I know lots of people using it. I tried it at the beginning, but I didn't feel that really helped me, but I know lots of people like you to use it. So as usual, they write the terms in one face and the description or any related questions on the other side. And the third one is one of my favorites, cross-reference topic. So I, in my experience, when I studied the materials, I always have the book or any study materials and the chart we just showed you guys all together on my table. And then I can refer between two sources or several multiple sources to get a better understanding. And then here, we, we say it's three questions carefully. For example, in the exams, there are lots of long writing exams and with a kind of story background. So in this situation, we really need to think about the terms and the points of this exam to get a better understanding, I think. You wanna talk some more, yeah?
I guess just a note on the LER prep exams. I took a lot of time going through those and I wrote down, so when you get the answers, some people will just close it, they'll, they'll say, oh, I, I got, you know, X and Y, right and wrong. But something I found really useful was to make a list of all the questions that I got wrong. So I'd actually go through each individual question that I got wrong and write down the subjects to know to go back and say, oh, some, I need to go back and study this subject. So if I was studying for exam one and I, and I got, you know, something wrong on some, something to do with a contract, I would write down exactly what that was and go back and study that. Then just the last two comments here are to provide comments for questions you feel are confusing, misleading or have multiple potential answers. I found a few mistakes on my exam, so I made comments about that. And to flag questions you're unsure of to review at the end. So just not to spend too much time because you don't want to rush through questions at the end. So if you're unsure of one, just one potential piece of advice is to flag the questions you're unsure of and to review it at the end.
And I feel like when you're doing your exam, you should be patient and read carefully and also don't be hesitant. Because sometimes based on, we just talked about the flaps, sometimes we actually flat the correct answer when we think about the questions. So I, I feel like if you sometimes, when you review the second time or the third time of questions, you flat and you are hesitant. My personally, I prefer believe my first insight of the answers you choices, I think. And on the screen now, we also have some really general tips. And you can follow, I think. And the last point is really important. If you're not getting to group, follow the link and join the groups. There are lots of, I think, conversations, resources happening in the groups.
Chen, did you want to just quickly go through these points individually or?
Uh, I think it's pretty general or I think you're gonna describe them individually?
Sure, I'll, I'll just go through them then. So yeah. So obviously, going through the exam and pacing yourself is really important for both reasons, to make sure that you're not like obviously just blowing through it and not taking your time, but also to make sure that you're not taking too much time on each of these questions. So just having like a, a general idea of how many questions are on the exam and also how much time you have and maybe before you write the exam being like, okay, I, I need to be about halfway by about this point, just to make sure that you're not rushing through the questions at the end too. Something else that I found really useful, so point number two here is review general strategies for multiple chess choice test-taking. A lot of people tend to fail these exams because they haven't done a test like this in a really long time. And something I found useful was to even just like on YouTube, review some strategies for just general test-taking, so like process of elimination and, and stuff like that. So there's tons of information sources out there on YouTube and just on Google just for general test-taking strategies. Book your exam time early to have a choice of time and location. So I mean, if you book at the last minute, you might risk, you know, driving an hour to a test center at a time that works for you. So the whole idea is with this point is just to make sure that you are not stressed out getting there. You know, you know where you're going and, and stuff like that. We encourage people to create a study group using the Google group if you would like to share notes, if you'd like to. I mean, obviously, we wouldn't encourage meeting in person now during COVID, but you find people who are in your area that you could connect with who are writing the same exam. That's totally encouraged. And so now if anyone has any
Jenny asked regarding section two, graphics were mentioned as being very important. Was there a particular book that you found best covered or showed the graphics?
Well, there's a, I mean, there's tons of different topics which all have different graphics. So not in particular for graphics related, because the majority of the questions are graphics. So, and all the questions will have, or the majority of them will have a correlated graphic. So that's just kind of what we meant by that, that on question two, they're not always, you know, like a paragraph question, but they'll have an associated diagram along with it. So those are just throughout all the books. Chen, did you find that there were any?
I feel like you can find all the basic graphics or I mean, related graphics from site analysis book. And in, I think the the good point of that book is they, they always provide descriptions and the directions guide you to read through the each graphics maps. And based on that, I think you can have a sense of how you're gonna look at each graphics. That's how I feel. And in my memory, in my experience experience in section two exam, sometimes it provides one graphic or one map and associates with two to three questions. Is that how, how you feel? Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, well, also considering that like everyone gets different exams depending on maybe what you write and which, which questions you get. So I mean, there, in terms of which book to recommend for which graphics you'll be seeing, it totally depends on the test too.
The next question is actually, it's a probably a Tara question. She asked, there's asked, is there a BCSLA study group or can a BCSLA member join an, out of an OIL study group? And I'll let Tara take the first swing at that. She just needs to unmute herself.
Okay, hi everybody. Thanks. This is a great session. I really appreciate our workshop leaders for doing this. BCSLA would love to set up a study group. We have an intern and associate subcommittee. So contact me and we'll set it up for you. And I defer to the OIL to answer if they can join that other team.
He, so the associate reps currently don't run any specific study groups. So anyone who's a member of the Google group is So, um, anyone who's a member of the Google group is welcome to start one. So whomever asked the question, if you would like to post and see if anyone would like to share notes with you, please feel free to use that as a medium to do so.
And the answer for the Alberta folks is, uh, we took a swing at getting some study groups going, uh, kind of before COVID. Uh, we'll probably look at taking another run at that in September. We'll just have to decide how we want to handle cohorting or in-person versus digital processes, uh, keeping in mind COVID. But it may be something that we look at putting together a, a cohort group that you can sort of limit your exposure or find a space where you can be properly spaced out. Uh, so, uh, watch for that sort of mid-August.
Uh, Todd, are there any other questions?
Not at this point. Are there any wallflowers out there that have been saving up a question that we're hoping to get a question in that haven't typed in yet? Remember there are no dumb questions. Jenny asks, did you do anything different when studying for the second time round for Section 2?
Yeah, I read the books that I didn't read the first time. Just to fill in those gaps in knowledge. So I felt like I understood certain topics. Obviously I didn't. It could have been that, it could have been, uh, it, it could have been that it was just different looking at graphic questions and maybe I was just feeling overconfident from passing the first one and kind of was like, oh, I know how to do this. So I think I just slowed down again, reread all the information and uncovered areas that I felt that, in doing a practice test again, I may have missed the first time.
I reviewed lots of details I ignored in my first time, actually. And I felt like I did ignore lots of info when I did the first time study. For example, like the, the soil chart, the soil triangle chart in my first exam, I thought it's just a normal graphic. I may can, I may have find the info from the exam. But actually, when I, after that, I failed the first time. I, then I back to the study material and get into the details. I started to look those details, charts, graphics really seriously. And I can tell there are lots of info I ignored in the first time.
Yeah, that's how I feel too.
There's no more questions. Last call.
Please feel free, if anyone thinks of any questions later, to utilize the Google group. Because Chen and I can answer your questions there. If you think of anything after.
All right. Any final slides, Chen, Lea? Is that your last slide? Oh, Kina just got in there. On Section 3, would you recommend any outside resources to understand different kinds of plans?
I didn't use any outside resources, um, aside from, I found on Section 3, because, um, there were those new types of questions, the hotspot ones, that doing the layer prep, practice exams were really helpful. Because I found that when I was in the actual test setting, I knew exactly how to do it based off of that. But no, I, I just read, I think first, I think for exam 3, there are 5 books on the rec, on the, like the main recommended reading list. I think that I did read about 3. And then I blew through another one like 2 nights before, just super high level, just to see if there was any like major things that I missed. But I didn't use any outside resources for that, no. But again, you might want to, because I have a lot of design experience in the job that I do. So I didn't feel like I needed to. But again, if you feel like in doing the practice exams, you do need additional resources, then please go on to that, um, secondary reading list as well.
Any more questions? Going, going, gone. Any final remarks from Lea and Chen?
Thank you, everybody, for tuning in and good luck on your layers.
Awesome. Thank you both. On behalf of all 3 of us, uh, we really appreciate this session. You guys do such a great job of it. As I said, this was recorded, so we will sort of share it and make it available to those that maybe didn't make it today. Were there any questions before we sort of let people go about the remote pilot that between us, we didn't address? With the CLARB remote pilot, I just want to give everyone sort of that last chance to ask any questions about that specific process. As I say, you do have until sort of Monday to figure that out if you wanted to switch. If you've already picked an in-person process, you can still switch as well. It's, you're not, it's, uh, you can switch to an online process. I know, uh, in Alberta, our COVID numbers have jumped again. So I'm sure some people at least are considering maybe not going to the test centers. But any final questions on the COVID pilot for the exams 1 and 2?
I actually have a question. Are there plans to extend that to be a regular thing?
So basically that's the, the intent of the pilot is exactly that. Um, so this was not a new plan of CLARB's. We've been working on this plan for a couple of years. COVID accelerated those plans and gave us some real impetus to accelerate the process. So we're, the, the more people that participate, it's going to give us really good data. So one of the things about the CLARB exam, our LAREs, is they're highly defensible. So, um, there's a huge amount of science that goes into, uh, into these exams to ensure that they're valid, that they're fair. That's why, one of the reasons why we don't share test questions when you get them wrong and why the, the, the score you need changes. Because sometimes the science tells us that a question is no good and they exempt it and it changes a lot of those variables. So this pilot will give us the data to tell us, is this a fair process? Is it achievable for our candidates? Does it affect your test scores? We don't know. And that's why the more of you that participate, the more we'll know, so we can make adjustments. Um, and so the intention right now, assuming the pilot goes well and the data supports this as an effective and fair testing process, our expectation is to, um, for sure, extend it to the December sitting for all of North America. Right now it's only Canadians that have access. So our hope is to, um, have everybody have access to Sections 1 and 2 for sure. And then, uh, there will also be, uh, some work done on Sections 3 and 4 to either adapt those exams to be functionally possible in the new software or to look at, we need to test those. It's really, it's the drag and drops and the fieldy questions in 3 and 4 that are problematic in this section. So they need to play with those and see, do we need to change the questions? Do we need to, and still have valid testing? So if this first section goes well and the results are positive, you will probably see 1 and 2 permanently available this way. And then 3 and 4 will try to phase in. So starting in October, I sit on the cardboard of directors. Um, and so I'll be sort of in that decision-making group right around that time. And Ashley just asked, has there been an update on when they'll announce the results since the August section has been extended? I know that the results are coming out very, very quickly. We're testing new psychomotronic software right now. That may even get us to a point for the December sitting that you will leave the exam knowing if you passed or not. They're just testing that now. I, I'm not sure I would want my exams in real time. That could be a real tough way to finish my day. But, um, we're looking at how quickly they'll come out as well. But, um, I, I, my understanding of the extension is that, um, it should be quite quickly. I don't think, it'll depend when, it really comes down to when the last test taker sits the exam. So if we know that everybody's completed their exams fourth week of August, despite the fact that the window's open till September, as soon as the last test taker in the section's done, they'll start doing the work. It doesn't, they don't have to wait for the full window to close. But it should be relatively quick because the Board of Directors uh, and the membership of CLARB have to have the analysis of the online testing group for the September meeting that we're having and it's on September 10th. So I will be very surprised if you don't have your results probably by September 10th or very shortly thereafter. That's not CLARB. That's just my gut knowing when our meeting is. But yeah, I would say if you don't know by about the 15th of September, I'll be very, very surprised, uh, just because of, we have a national meetings on the 10th. So, good question. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, I want to thank everyone for coming out and super big thanks to Lea and Chen for leading today. We're gonna try to do these quarterly, as I said, so we should see the next one of these falling sometime in September, I believe. But yeah, thanks, everyone. Have an amazing day. Um, enjoy the nice weather if you're getting it. Uh, and other than that, we'll be in touch.
Thanks, everybody. And thanks, Todd, for moderating.
No problem.
Have a good weekend, everyone.
Thank you, guys.